Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to call regular meeting of Bloomfield Hills Board of Education meeting to order. Madam Secretary, could you take attendance, please? Thank you very much. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. Welcome to all. This is one of those wonderful evenings where we have the opportunity to recognize some of the special achievements of our, some special people and students and staff members in our community. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday and really look forward to spending a special time with everyone this evening. Thank you for being part of our school community. We've been engaging with many of you as part of our strategic planning process. Dr. Glass is going to talk about a little bit about that. But we appreciate everyone being part of our community and helping to make it a special place at Bloomfield Hills Schools. Just want to make a couple of observations this evening. Particularly, I think most everybody will have received at their home or in an email mention of the Bloomfield Hills School Foundation Annual Appeal, which is going on right now, which is called Picture the Possibilities. I hope if you have a few couple of minutes that you could go to www.bloomfield.org/give. And the annual appeal goes through December 31st. All donors, all donors, will be entered for a drawing for two tickets for the foundation celebration, which will be in March, which will be a fabulous evening of fun. And donors over $50 will be invited to a special opening of the, in January, of our new Bloomfield Hills Winter Park, which will be opening at the Bowers Farm in January. It'll be having some fun times and sledding hill and hopefully some other hot chocolate and bonfires and fun over there. So that's something new that's coming to our community that we are all really excited about that's happening. I hope if you've had a chance to look at the notification that comes out from the school district on Wednesdays, there was one interesting one that's come out recently and Shear had sent a notice to the board earlier. We've added a new feature to our website called Translate. And if you are in need in our community to be able to have easier understanding of the communications on our website, and you wish to have it translated into another language, you can press a little button in the right upper corner of our page. And we have 102 choices of different languages that you can have your choice. And if you want to give it a try, I tried it this afternoon. It was kind of fun. I know we have over 50 languages spoken at home in our own school district. And that really speaks to the wonderful diversity and richness that we have here. And I'm really proud of the work that we're doing and continuing to improve our website so to make it more accessible to everyone. And with that, Dr. Glass, you have a few things you wanted to mention in your stupid tennis update.
Yes, just a few things. This is a time of political season we call lame duck. Lame duck is that period of time after which, after an election during which officials in the lawmaking chambers are going to be outgoing. So what we often find happens is that the quality of dialogue is different. It changes. And sometimes things are hurried up and rushed through so that, you know, the officials who are there, who aren't going to be there in a short period of time can accomplish some things. And what we find is that the bills come at an incredibly fast pace. We find that they're not always, there's not always the time for them to be well thought out. I have sent out on our Wednesday web news the last two weeks, a notice, a legislative alert, which I don't do very often, but I have the last couple of times because I think it's important for everybody to be watching what's going on in lame duck. Because if the things that occur there aren't really well thought out, then there can be repercussions that we live with for years to come. And I have had a couple of emails from people asking me to please not, you know, pontificate during, you know, sending those things out. But I want to clarify, my intention is not to at all impose my political views. Part of my job as the leader in the district is to look out into the future and look after the legislative interests of the district. You know, if I see something out there that's potentially going to harm our ability to provide the kind of education we provide, oftentimes I would just take that up with our legislators by lobbying them, calling them, and that sort of thing. And that's what I do 99% of the time. But when we get into lame duck, sometimes we can see things coming, and we're worried about something coming that really would affect our funding, really would affect a number of things that could really be difficult. So I do see that as my responsibility. I wanted to clarify that, to if I see something coming, to warn you, to give you the chance to look at it. And every individual citizen certainly has the opportunity to do whatever they feel is right. But I also feel a responsibility to let you know what my opinion is on the matter in terms of how it might affect us. Now, this lame duck, we just simply feel that we're asking people, I'm asking our legislators on behalf of the school district to just not make any rushed decisions right now. Just don't rush anything through. Think it through. There's time to debate it in the next legislative session. But the volume of bills coming through right now is really, is quite intense. And there are just a few days left. And it's really hard to be thoughtful and consider all the ankles on an issue in that environment. So I want to let you know, if you're so inclined, contact your legislator, ask them, give them your opinion, go on their website, send them an email, follow along what's going on. And I urge you to become an active citizen in our democratic government. So thank you very much for that. And I also want to just say what a pleasure it's been over the last two weeks to get into so many of our schools and really enjoy seeing the teaching and learning going on. I've had a chance to be at Eastover, at the International Academy, at Conant, and also had the chance to see the Domination Tour. I don't know if you're familiar with the Domination Tour, but our middle school bands, like for example, yesterday they went to several of our elementary schools. I happened to catch them at Conant. And they filled up the gym, the band, the orchestra, and the choir. And they performed for the elementary school students. And it was just a wonderful, wonderful experience. They sounded so good. And it was so engaging and interactive. Those are the kind of things that I really enjoy seeing and I think highlight some of the programs that make our district special. And then I want to just remind everyone, let you know that we've been working on strategic planning for, I guess, about the last six weeks, and we're coming toward the end of it now. Strategic planning is so important. We're doing it for a three to five year period going out. You may have taken a survey that was given to the community to look at the draft goals that we have in the four areas that we're looking at. Also, you've had an opportunity online to look at the draft vision and draft mission. They're exciting. And we've gotten over 900 responses to those, which is really substantial. And that feedback, those 900 responses will be used to take back to the committees who helped develop these, about 60 people or more who've helped develop these, and match up the drafts with the feedback received, make some last minute adjustments, and then bring them back to this board, potentially at our January meeting if everything goes on schedule. And one last thing I want to mention is we, the Oakland County Youth Assistance Organization, which is a fantastic organization, and of which our school and the community is part, honored some folks recently. And one of them was our own school resource liaison officer, Officer David Van Kirkov. And he was recognized because he took the initiative to work with students here at Bloomfield Hills High School to produce a video that was needed for youth assistance. It was, there was an outdated video that they were using to try to be, to try to provide guidance to students. And I think Dave looked at that and said, I think we can do better than that. And put, everybody came together. Our students did an amazing job in acting and producing and editing, putting this together. And Dave was recognized for that. And I really was so proud to be there with him. And I know some of our board members were there too as well, Mr. Barron, Mr. Cullen. And so it was great to be part of that. And what I admired, I guess, the most about that is that sort of can do spirit, that sort of, that ability to look at something that can be done better and to take it on and to have fun with it. And it really turned out beautifully. So anyway, thanks for the time. And back to you, Madam President.
Thank you. So before we go on to our staff and student recognition, I do want to thank our crew. When we come to the high school, it's a big job to set us up. And I really want to thank Yaman Al Sabat, Josh Baylin, David Collins, Jack Hale, Sophia Simoni, Jackie Modak, Topher Moore, and Vicky Chandler for helping us to bring this to our community. Thank you so much. So I'm going to move over here to the podium. And we've got a couple of special people to recognize. Okay, so I just had cataract surgery and I haven't gotten used to these glasses yet. So I'll do my best. So tonight, I have the great honor to recognize two wonderful gentlemen who have given great service to our community, Mr. Edward Ford and Mr. Jason Politeer. I've had the opportunity to speak with each of them over the past week, to have an opportunity to reflect on their time on the Bloomfield Hills School Board and some of their key points of pride that surfaced for each of them as they look back. So first, I'd like to invite Mr. Politeer to come up here. So when Jason Politeer was appointed to the Board of Education in July of 2017, we were working with the administration to find a creative solution in order to protect the E.L. Johnson Nature Center from encroaching development and construction. Jason brought his skills from the banking and real estate world with careful reasoning and collaborative spirit to our discussion to help us find a win-win solution for our community. As the Board of Education has been working to update our school district policies, one of the goals that we've been working on is to create a set of board operating policies. And as the newest member of our board, Jason has been very helpful in helping to provide us and to improve the work that we're doing to codify the duties in the operations of the board, which will help all future board members to navigate their role. Jason is also proud of the quick teamwork of the board to pass a resolution immediately after the Parkland school shooting in opposition to guns in our schools. Jason expressed great appreciation for the opportunity to learn how our school district works and all that it entails. And he's taken advantage of the Michigan Association of School Board training and has found them extremely valuable. He is an engaged parent, a greater Detroit community leader. He has shared his board leadership experience and expertise from diverse organizations to enhance our school district. So thank you so much, Jason. We know you will stay involved. And many thanks for your service to our community and to our children.
Thank you.
Don't go away. If you want to open it, you see, people might want to see.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Ford.
So I've had the honor to, working with Mr. Ford on this school board for 10 years. He is generous, hardworking, ethical man. When Ed stepped forward to run for the Board of Education, he was greatly concerned about the divide that had developed in our community over the high school issue. He was anxious to help us to develop planning that would heal our community and bring us back together. He is very proud to have been a leader who can say, we are one Bloomfield. When Ed came on the board, the district had never operated with a strategic plan. Ed had over 30-year career experience of using strategic planning and pushed us to create our first one and make a plan to become best in class. He celebrates that opportunity to get the community involved and to gain confidence. Ed is proud of the leadership our district is taking to recognize and develop strategies to be more welcoming and inclusive for all students. He sees the strengths and diversity and is proud that we began training and engagement with use of restorative practices to improve school culture. He has been proud of the diversity of this board and believes that it continues to be an important strength to have a board that reflects our community. He's proud of the master facilities planning for the district. And we have made, had to make some difficult decisions along the way to restructure our schools and grade configurations, close buildings, sell some properties. And he encouraged us to continue to be sure that our facilities are well maintained and updated. He's proud that we have the renowned Superintendent of the Year in Dr. Rob Glass, who is revered and respected by our community. He celebrates that he sees Bloomfield Hills as a benchmark in the educational community, as they see what we hold as standard when we make budget cuts and preserve the arts and music. He values our great teachers who are excited to be with our students every day. And we appreciate your leadership throughout the years. You've been board president. You have led goal setting. You have bought us value stream mapping. And you always have been a champion of Bloomfield Hills Schools. And we can never thank you enough. We wish you best wishes to you and to your family always.
Thank you very much.
And now our secretary, Dr. Jackie Al Soud, will lead us through the rest of our staff and student recognition.
Good evening. Before we get started with tonight's celebration, I'd like to invite you, everyone, to join us after the recognition is over for the reception in the main commons just outside the auditorium doors. To those that are being recognized this evening, please come up on the stage when your group or name is called via the stairs to my right. You will then cross the center of the stage and remain there for the portion of your presentation. When your section is complete, please cross to the podium so that I and the other board members and Dr. Glass can shake your hand. And each individual being recognized this evening will receive a recognition pin. We all know that success stories require more than one person to help a student achieve their goals, which is why I would first like to recognize the family members, classmates, teachers, and coaches of the student being honored tonight. If you are here to support a student or staff member being acknowledged this evening, please stand. Thank you so much for being here and all that you do. Your encouragement is essential to the continued excellence of our BHS family. And the board would like to extend our gratitude. Now, to begin, we'd like to recognize and welcome Rachel Mattz, English teacher at Bloomfield Hills High School, and students Jenny Shea and Maddie Wine to the stage. Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Mattz. I am an English teacher here at the high school, and I advise the student newspaper, The Hawkeye. Each year, the National Scholastic Press Association presents individual awards honoring the best individuals in scholastic journalism. Last month, two Hawkeye students were recognized for their outstanding portfolio, design, and photography work at the NSPA Annual Convention. Maddie Wine received third place Design of the Year for her news magazine spread. And Jenny Shea was honored as the national champion for Design of the Year for her informational infographic. Jenny also received the following awards: second place Design of the Year, fourth place Photo of the Year, fifth place Design of the Year, and an honorable mention for Photo of the Year and Design of the Year. Congratulations to Maddie and Jenny, as well as the entire Hawkeye staff for their continued dedication to journalistic excellence.
Next, please welcome Principal Rob Direkka and Annalise Margolis, a sixth grader from West Hills Middle School to join us here on stage.
Good evening. I'm Rob Direkka. I'm principal at West Hills Middle School. Tonight, I have the distinct pleasure to silence my phone. Thank you. My wife calling. Sorry about that, Annalise. All right. I do have the distinct pleasure to recognize Annalise Margolis tonight. She's, as introduced, a sixth grade student at West Hills. Annalise received the Matt Epling Defeat the Label Upstander Award on October 26th. Defeat the Label is a Michigan-based and internationally-known nonprofit organization that is empowering students in classrooms around the globe to end bullying. An important part of this work includes the Upstander Program. It's an eight-hour program all sixth grade students at West Hills experience over the course of the school year. The program is designed to empower students to take action when they witness bullying and to positively strive to create a more equitable and inclusive environment. I think for context's sake and to emphasize Annalise's accomplishments, it's important to reference that Annalise was presented this award by Kevin Epling. I'm not sure if the name sounds familiar to you or not, but it's very personal work for Kevin, as Kevin's son committed suicide as a result of bullying and has been a champion for anti-bullying legislation. In fact, Michigan's Safe Schools Laws carries the name of Matt Epling. With this as a backdrop, Annalise was nominated for this important award by Becky Umsheid, a West Hills paraprofessional. And I think Becky's words say it best when it comes to Annalise. I'm going to read a portion of her nomination that speaks to Annalise's character. "Annalise has shown what it means to defy bullying and accept that every person has feelings and deserves to be treated with respect and kindness. As a paraprofessional for 23 years, one of my roles is to bridge the gap between students in general education classrooms and students in a special education classroom. Since Annalise was in fourth grade, I was drawn immediately to her natural ability to approach students who didn't always have a big group of kids around them. I've observed her in the cafeteria and on the playground, either just bringing her group of friends to a table where someone was alone or approaching students on the playground and asking them if they would like to join a game. Some of these students are the most vulnerable students in the school, and she was so genuine in her approach that it was contagious. Following her lead, her friends began engaging in play and conversations too. Annalise does this without realizing that she's doing anything special. It's just who she is. It's been such a pleasure getting to know her and watching her continue embracing her peers with acceptance and kindness. Annalise is a ray of sunshine. Her smile in the halls and friendly demeanor makes your day. She has a special gift to foster friendships with all students. As a young student, I believe she displays the qualities of an upstander." With that, I'd like to thank Annalise for making a difference. And I'd hope that you could join us all in recognizing Annalise Margolis.
Next, please welcome Patricia Hepler from East Hills Middle School and Laura Amathouli to join us here on stage.
Good evening. I'm Patty Hepler, and I'm a peer at East Hills Middle School. I wanted to thank you all for coming tonight and help me recognize Laura Amathouli. Laura is our middle school specialist for the district, for the middle schools. She's brand new to the district. She's already made quite a name for herself. Not only has she successfully completed three book fairs this fall, she applied for, and was given five grants for literacy and the development of creative thinking skills. Please help me welcome and congratulate Laura on all of her success and her continuing accomplishments in the district. Thank you.
Please help me welcome Rebecca Anders, supervisor at Wing Lake, and her two nominees, Jessica Shuler and Sue Florick to the stage.
Good evening. This evening, I have the distinct pleasure to honor Jessica Shuler, teacher at Wing Lake, and Sue Florick, our school nurse. They wrote a grant with the support of Wing Lake's former supervisor, Tommy Gersh, in spring of 2018. In September of this year, we were awarded a $21,350 grant from the Community Foundation of Southeastern Michigan to purchase a Zono sanitizing cabinet. The Zono sanitizing cabinet kills 99% of common bacterias and common viruses. This is huge for the Wing Lake community, where we have students with significant cognitive and multiple impairments with compromised immune systems. The purchase of the system will improve the health, cleanliness, hygienic needs, and overall well-being of our Wing Lake students. The system will sanitize their oral motor tools, fine and gross motor manipulatives, communication visuals, electronic equipment, clothing and fabric used for safety and positioning, as well as toys and even their wheelchairs. The Zono is truly a game changer in keeping students at Wing Lake healthy. And we could not be more thankful for Sue and Jessica for writing the grant for us and helping us get this machine.
Let's welcome to the stage principal of East Hills Middle School, Jason Rubel, and Sandy Lovell.
If one middle school principal can do it, so can another, I suppose. We're going the wrong way. But I'm Jason Rubel, the proud principal of East Hills. And it's my pleasure tonight to honor Sandy Lovell. Sandy Lovell is our day custodian at East Hills. And as you might imagine, in a middle-level building filled with fourth through eighth graders, we are known for our messes. And to be honest, we are very needy and at times pretty demanding. Through all the challenges we provide- Through all the challenges we provide each day, Sandy is a true blessing to our building. Members of our school community describe Sandy as cheerful, kind, and hard-working, and she embodies all of these traits. She's an advocate for our students and families, and she takes great care of our faculty and staff. Sandy puts the needs of others before her own, impressively always greeting each person and task with a smile. One of her truly amazing gifts is her ability to think ahead and frequently address issues before they are known to others. Like the famous Wayne Gretzky is quoted, "A good hockey player plays where the puck is. A great hockey player plays where the puck is going to be." This quote describes Sandy perfectly. I can't tell you how many times she's been radioed with a request, only to have her reply, "I already took care of it." As a result, every day she makes the work of those around her easier and more productive, removing obstacles for others, and willingly taking others' obstacles on as if they are her own. Sandy Lovell is a true role model for our school community. She walks the walk, and she makes all of us proud to be East Hills Cavaliers and members of our district community. Sandy, thank you for all you do for us.
Please welcome back RJ Gazati and the Boys Varsity Tennis Team and their coaches.
While the boys are making their way up here, I just want to give a very brief summary of the boys' season, actually the last four seasons. This is, without a doubt, the most successful program that we have had since the creation of Bloomfield Hills High School. The varsity tennis team this year won their second straight MHSAA Division I state championship and their third in four years. It's incredible to think of what these boys and coaches have done. I went back and looked at previous season's results for the state. This team had the largest winning margin in, I think, at least 13 or 14 years, and that was just in a quick check on my part. My understanding is, going into the state final matches, we had the state championship clinched. We could have lost, or all or very close to all of our championship matches, and still taken home the team championship. That is pretty much unheard of, from what I understand, in the tennis community. So I don't think Coach Burks is here. We do have Coach Tolema here. I am going to read very quickly the entire roster, because I want all of them to be recognized. Gus Berger, Donovan Brown, Sebastian Berman, Cade Berman, Andrew Chen, Charles Dixon, Ryan Frank, Tommy Herb, Michael Lee, Max Nozenchuck, James Peel, Keetan Ravankar, Noah Roslin, Adrian Wyland, Phoenix Williams, and Andrew Zhang. I do also want to say one last thing about these boys. We had Tommy Herb at two singles, Cade Berman at four singles, and then Max Nozenchuck and Phoenix Williams at three doubles. We're state runners-up this year. We had five state champion individual or doubles players. At one singles, state champion Andrew Zhang. Three singles, Sebastian Berman. One doubles, Noah Roslin and Adrian Wyland. Two doubles, Ryan Frank and Andrew Chen. And four doubles, Michael Lee and James Peel. It's an amazing accomplishment to have five of your eight flights be state champions. So I'd like to congratulate the coaches and all of the boys, and encourage anyone who is interested in high school tennis, go up to Midland Tennis Center some year and watch these guys play in the state finals. It's a really exciting atmosphere. My kids love it, so congratulations, guys.
West Hills, East Hills, and Bloomfield Hills Middle School. Jay Schumacher is unable to attend tonight due to previous engagements, so we'll invite the students and two of the coaches, Eve Pierre and Laura Nerwith, to join us onstage at this time.
My name is Eve Pierre, and I am the forensics coach for West Hills Middle School. On November 17th, Bloomfield Hills, East Hills, and West Hills Middle Schools represented the Bloomfield Hills School District in the Fall MIFSA Forensic State Tournament. All three middle schools swept the tournament with many awards for finalist and semifinalist placement, and overwhelming majority of all of our students on our teams placed. It was really a thrilling sight to hear Bloomfield Hills Schools, all of our middle schools, so well-represented. It's really an extraordinary honor for our individual school teams, but also for our school district. So on behalf of all of the coaches at three middle schools, we wanted to take a minute as well on this platform to thank our principals for their support, parents, our coaches, and even board members for their support of our forensics program as well. Since Mr. Schumacher is unable to attend, I'm actually going to turn it over to one of our assistant coaches, Stephanie Potier, to announce the East Hills team.
Good evening, everyone. It's an exciting night to celebrate students' efforts. Lot of perseverance goes into this. I'm Stephanie Potier, and I'm here for Jay Schumacher. He's unable to attend this evening, as you've heard, so I'm honored to acknowledge the success of the East Hills Middle School Forensics Team. If the East Hills team could please step forward. We would also like to acknowledge our first-place storyteller, David Le Bond. David, please step forward. Okay. That's unfortunate. Such a nice French name, too. Thank you all for your participation this year, your perseverance and hard work. It's much appreciated.
Next, I would like to acknowledge the success of our West Hills Middle School team. West Hills members, if you could step forward, please, on the team. At this time, I'd also like to acknowledge the first-place winners from West Hills. So if you could step forward when you hear your name. Paul Abdonor, first-place storytelling. Rachel Veris, first-place dramatic interpretation. Dylan Crimmens, first-place dramatic interpretation. You're right, two West Hills tied each other for first in that category. That was kind of amazing. Addison Fenster duo and Danielle Forman duo. Jennifer Guan, first-place oratory. And Nikki Little, first-place prose. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lauren Newworth. I am the lucky, lucky person that gets to be the head coach at Bloomfield Hills Middle School, and it's my first year, and I am having such a great time. I personally want to thank the Bloomfield Hills Middle School community for welcoming me so generously and so enthusiastically. It's been really great so far. So BH team, would you mind stepping forward for me, please? These kids are cool. I also, when you hear your name, I'm going to just go ahead and read the first-place winners from our team as well. JP Addo duo. Nikhil Kathari duo. Tenei Dakarapu, not duo, sales, sorry. Serena Doshi, storytelling six. And Giselle Hadad, storytelling six. I don't know if either of them made it, but those are our first-place winners from BH. Thank you so much.
Congratulations to the entire three teams on a great season. We're looking forward to see what happens here at Bloomfield Hills High School in April. Thank you.
Thank you for your support of our district. We hope you will join us in the Ingrid M. Day Commons just outside this auditorium doors to enjoy some punch and cookies.
So I'd like to start with the consent agenda, please.
The Board of Education approved the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes, regular meeting of November 15th, 2018. Request to approve Barton Mallow staffing plan. Request to approve disbarment reports. Request to award banking services RFP number 1023. Request to approve procurement of new school buses in the amount of $363,504. Request to approve HR actions. Thanks.
Support from Mr. Ford? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So under general discussion, I have a report from the Instruction Committee from the meeting of December 3rd.
So on December 3rd, we had a Board Instruction Committee, and the agenda was the Portrait of a Learner update, Special Education Discipline, 6-12 Counseling update, the goals and the focus, the Learning Lab update, and other. So we've been working on the Portrait of the Learner for some time, and so we were provided an update by Christine Di Palato, Rob Glass, and Todd Bidleck. Christine and Rob discussed how we created the Portrait of a Learner, and they shared the revised-based decision talking points. Todd discussed how we will apply and utilize the POL in our mission, strategic planning, and in the classroom. We discussed how the process will be implemented and how we'll measure our progress. Currently, they're working hard to measure the what, the curriculum and the standards, and the POL will measure the how, the framework on how to get the what. What is the POL? Sorry, the how is the POL. And we discussed the role of equity inclusion with the administration and the long and the short-term goals. So this is great. We've really been discussing this for so much, for a long time, and it's very powerful. The wording is very powerful. The second thing is, we discussed the Special Education Discipline with Jen Peroni, and she had PowerPoint, and she shared the professional development on discipline and behavior that we are using to train our staff, which includes creating uniformity across all the buildings, file review, pointing out the areas where we need improvement, and Oakland Schools offers opportunity for self-review for us to see areas where we can improve. So basically, when she came to the district, she started doing really a scan, and so one of the areas that she noticed is that we really need to have uniformity across the buildings. And so after doing that, she could see where are strengths and where are areas of improvement. She had external individuals, like from Oakland Schools, who gave a review, trained them so they could do a self-review. And also, we have, one of our attorneys is also providing professional development for our staff, including reviewing our 504 manual and also our discipline processes. And we also discussed the 504 coordinator and consultant versus the training of our counselors, and how to prioritize this to better support our 504 students. We actually spent quite a lot of time discussing this. The next up is our 6-12 Counseling Update by Margaret Schultz. Margaret has met with 4-12 counselors, discussed the team-building and the common goals. The goals include organize and finalize the eight-to-nine move-up processes, and we discussed providing the language on how to communicate with the parents and students. The second goal is to align the bullying and the social-emotional learning curriculum from 4-12, so alignment is really important. And we discussed how does restorative practices currently integrate and how we would like it to even be more integrated. The third goal is the common protocol for counselors with a student in crisis. So they're working on the protocol of the steps with the counselors from in all, fourth grade through the 12th grade, and what will they take when the student's in crisis? And so we discussed that to make sure we understood what was, what they were really, what they would be doing. And then their next meeting is February 1st, 2019. So then the next item on agenda is the Learning Lab Update by Kimberly Hampton. So Kimberly shared what the Learning Lab looks like and what are the goals of the program. So the general idea is that the Learning Lab exists in any of our classrooms, and it's a way for teachers to work together to provide each other professional development on teaching and learning. And it's a way that they can really study their practice and really look for continuous improvement, but also they are developing a network because it will be across all the grades throughout the district. So all the fifth-grade teachers or all the fourth-grade teachers. And one of the things that they do is that one of the teachers usually will volunteer or be nominated for a particular practice, and then the other teachers stand around the room while this teacher is showing a particular practice. And they observe without judgment, and then they debrief afterwards, and they celebrate the successes and elevate and study them because they really want to see those teacher leaders and how they're modeling these great practices. leaders and how they're modeling these great practices. The building principals encourage the host sites and the teachers for the Learning Lab. Each site, so it's fair, so each site will have two visits, and eventually, there are plans to apply this concept to the 6 through 8 high school, and it's really important. We've been studying about professional development and our new practices, and one of the most important thing is for our teachers to really build their sense of self-efficacy, and so this is the most important, the research said this is the most important thing that needs to happen for continuous improvement of teaching and learning practices. So this is really a fantastic, fantastic professional development of teachers working together and really creating these learning labs, which in real time, one of the most important things that we found isn't just that the teachers are observing each other, it's that those teachers that are observing can actually go and talk to the students after they've had this lesson. They can go talk to the students and see, and ask the students, what did they really get out of it? And so, that really informs their own practice and helps them really internalize the practice. So, it's just marvelous work. That's BIC.
Mr. Ford?
I'm the Board Instruction Committee and the LST for the work that they've been doing for the last year or so. I mean, we're on a tremendous trajectory from a learning standpoint. I really appreciate the focus on the needs of the students, you know, like what to do for a student in crises. And, you know, obviously, you know, we are all in agreement that we want to have a safe learning environment for our students. Unfortunately, many of our students get involved in crises that are not of their own making, but yet they need a lot of help in dealing with it, and they can't find it at home, and it affects them, their grades, and their interactions with their teachers and their fellow students. So, having a plan on how we can reach out to them and kind of come alongside them and help them and provide them resources is one of the things that's really going to make this school district great. Not only are we focusing on how we can help our students optimize their outcomes, but we treat them as human beings, as beings of worth, as individuals, and we try to provide them all the, not only physical, but mental and psychic support that we possibly can. So, I think it's great. It's very inspiring.
And one of the really important things that we've really been studying is that, of course, all of our buildings always had plans, but as Todd came in and as Jen came in, the more important thing that they noticed is that these plans are different and the strategies are different. And in order to really take anything we do in our instruction or in our student support to the next level of excellence, we really have to be able to have some standardization across all buildings, and then all the teachers and staff can talk together, and when we do professional development, it's really building them to the next level. And so, I think this is one of the most profound things that we've been focusing on probably in the last year.
Okay, so then, this afternoon, our Facilities Legal Affairs Committee have met. Mr. Baron, you're going to say a few more words for on Mr. Banks' behalf for us.
I'm going to miss these meetings. I'm telling you what.
The FFLA meeting, as President Vanoyen just said, just met earlier this evening. At the meeting was myself, Trustee Bank, and Trustee Politier, along with Ms. Kostic, Rob Glass, Brian, and Kelly Bowe. We had a number of items on the agenda. A couple of them were actually on our agenda this evening at the Board that we had in consent. The first thing we went over is the International Academy Consortium Agreement Revisions. The IA is run by a number of different districts around the county. There were 19 of them. Now, we're down to about 13 districts. So, this consent, sorry, the consortium agreement was last updated in 2006, so it was about 12 years ago. So, we're making some just minor adjustments, some wording changes, nothing very major there, but one thing that we are looking at is the way that the organization is governed and the governance structure. There's a Joint Steering Committee, which is made up of representatives of the different districts, and we're looking at if there are any changes we want to make to the governance process there. So, Dr. Glass is going to be talking to the other superintendents in the county and getting back to us over the next few months on any additional revisions. So what we saw today was just a draft of what possibly will be there, and we'll see some updates over the next few months. We also talked about the banking agreement that was on the consent agenda. It's basically the same as it has been in the past. We are continuing to have Comerica Bank as our banker. There were four quotes, and Comerica came in at the low bidder. The third thing, we went over the food service. We last updated, or at last looked at, doing an RFP for our food services five years ago, which was in 2014. So, every five years, we need to go out and do another RFP. So Tina has laid out about an eight-month process that we're going to be going through as a district, starting in November and going all the way through the summer of this 2019 to look at what different vendors out there that can provide us food services and see what, whether we're going to stay with Aramark that we have right now or possibly change to somebody else. We also had a, looking at a quote for our garbage disposal or our garbage hauler. We're currently using GFL, and we'll probably use them in the future. Barton, also, every year, we have a staffing plan that we get from Barton Mallow, who works on our facilities. We are doing two things that are different this year. One, we're combining our technology along with the physical, the construction portion of it, so that actually is, between that and some very competitive bidding, we were able to save about 20% on the cost of what we had paid in the past for that, so that's definitely a benefit for us. And the final thing is, during our other, we talked a little bit about what we just talked about in the consent agenda, which is we're purchasing five buses for this year. One of the things that we're looking at for next year, because it can get a little complex, all of our buses right now are diesel, but as technology continues to advance, some, there are buses that are available that are electric. Obviously, that adds a lot of complexity. The buses would be more expensive, but you might be able to save on maintenance or fuel costs. So, Mr. Goby is going to be looking at that over the next year, so when we look at this for the next fiscal year in the fall and the winter of 2019, hopefully, we can look at and see what the possibility would be for electric buses in the future. So that was FFLA this afternoon.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Baron. Any questions? Very good. So, I don't have any cards for public comment. I'd like to invite Mr. Ford or Mr. Politier, if you have any comments that you'd like to make to the Board or the community, if you'd like to say something. You don't have to, no force, but if you'd like, this is an opportunity for you.
HB4 Beauty, huh? Well, yeah, I guess I just want to state that it's been a real honor to serve on the Board of Trustees of Bloomfield Hills Public Schools. It's been an honor to serve with each and every one of you. I'm so proud of what we've been able to accomplish in the last 10 years as a district. I remember when I first started to get involved, as Mrs. Vanoyen was saying, and maybe now it's seeming like ancient history, which is just fine, but it seemed at that point that the community was very divided. There was an east-side, west-side thing. I don't know how you have sides in a place like Bloomfield, but anyway, it was there, and, you know, it was very real to a lot of people, and they had a lot of concerns about it. And I think we're very much one Bloomfield now, and I think, you know, one of the catalysts was this structure that we're in now, because that was another bone of contention. Are we going to have one high school? Are we going to have two renovated high schools, two new high schools? What are we going to do? And, you know, we really had to roll up our sleeves and kind of focus on the issues and kind of leave the personalities at the door, and really focus on what was best for our community and our kids. And I'm glad to say that that viewpoint won over, and that's why we have such a fine facility now that people are literally coming from all over the world to study, not because it's opulent, I mean, it's a very, very nice facility, but it's not opulent, it is excellent. But what's even more excellent is what takes place inside its walls and inside the walls of all the buildings of our school district, and that's what's gaining a lot of attention. And also, our efforts to have a strategic plan that really digs deep to find out what does it take to help our students reach their personal best. And that's the kind of school district that anybody would want their kids in, certainly the one that I wanted mine in, and that's why I'm so happy that we moved here and that all three of my children were educated here. And I have to say that all three of them told me that Bloomfield Hills Schools did a great job of preparing them. So, just as a small update, one of them is in medical school, the other one will be in medical school by next August, and the third one is a developing artist, and I couldn't be happier because they're happy and they feel fulfilled, and that's what I would wish for every one of our students. And I wish this district nothing but the best. I'm just a phone call away, and I'm happy to serve this community in any other capacity that my services are required for, but it's really been an honor, and I love all of you guys. And I'm going to miss, as I said, coming to these meetings, but I won't ever forget it, and I'll always have a warm place in my heart for not only the district, but the people who serve in it, so thank you.
I'd like to follow, Mr. Politier.
Which is exactly why I had Ed go first, because he said everything that I was going to say, only better. But the only thing that I would add is that for me, it has been a distinct honor and a privilege to serve on this esteemed body with you folks and to get to know each and every one of you better. This service has challenged me to think bigger, because this undertaking of running and helping to run a school district is massive, and one of the things that I've always prayed about was for me to be able to think bigger than I've thought, and so this opportunity has challenged me to do that, and I thank you guys for the appointment and allowing me to serve in this capacity. I am going to miss serving in this way, but I don't plan on going anywhere. I plan to be in the district, if the Lord says the same. I plan to be in the district for quite a while. I have two babies that just started in the preschool, and so I've got quite a few years left in the district and in me, and I don't plan on going anywhere, so thank you. And thank you for the gift. This was a nice surprise, and I appreciate it, so.
We live in a community of amazing people with many gifts and talents that they share with our school district on a regular basis, and we can't thank you gentlemen in particular, but our community at large in many ways that they helped to make our school district a special place. And I guess this is a season of giving, and we appreciate all the gifts that people in our community continue to give to us. Best wishes to everybody in the holiday season, and we are adjourned.